It seems like trying to be able to make it again.
All right, without any further ado, we'll call this meeting, October 17th, regularly scheduled meeting of the Macon County Planning Board order. It's good to be back, glad you all could make it out. It's been awhile since we've met, but we will move out along and get through this agenda. Commissioner Tate will be joining us tonight, and I know for a fact that Mark and Lamar have both called in and they won't be able to make it tonight either. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at the agenda. If you haven't, if you can do that at this time, it's not very long. After that, I'll entertain a motion to approve. It will be the August 15th, 2013, and it's the last time that we got together. I'll make the motion at seven.
Is that what your answer is?
Yes, we have a second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let the minutes reflect approval of the agenda. Next, we'll move on. We will be able to have liaison comments this evening, public comments. There is no one to post, but if anybody from the press would like to say anything. Glad to have you all with us this afternoon. New business, Matt will take over from here. Does everyone have a package that Matt took together? Matt, if you can take it over from here, we'll begin discussing the first property owned by Macon County.
There's a total of 10 properties that Macon County owns that continuously surplus, going through and looking at all of the property. Obviously, they range from old schools, outline parks, forests and stuff like that throughout the county. It does such that are not included in this list are properties that are listed that are currently being used by the county. Some other examples are Peachtree, a property on Peachtree that was listed, Al Farce at the airport and Greenway. Chris had brought up a point last week about looking like South Macon School, some land out there. South Macon School is actually the only school that has an Al Farce, so some future growth there in the future. The property list as we go through it, there's going to be three pages for each property. The first page is going to be just a GIS overview of it. The second is more of a three-dimensional, see, or see a little more detail on it, and then the third is going to be the tax parcel. The 10 properties we're looking at, and I'll give you little scenarios as we go through them. The first one's going to be the old Macon County Garage, which is two acres inside the city limits. The next one is the old Coliseum School, which is eight acres. The third one is on Bethel Church Road. That property was acquired with the intention of putting in the Southland Center. The fourth one, it probably at some point should have been given to Fruit Grove Association or something, just doesn't make sense why it's there. The one on Highlands Road, I think it was acquired, it was already wetland. I think part of it was required when the Greenway was being developed, at a sort of determinate point, Greenway down that way. And one on Owl Church Road, which is the next one, that's 2.56 acres out of the area, it's an old line forest service office. We acquired that, if you'll notice, when we get to the two, it's kind of in line with the runway, we might want it to fade where we want it to be better. Then the piece on Middle Creek, that was a piece donated to the county, it's 3.25 acres. The problem with it is it's landlocked, there's no right away in or out.
The trees have been getting cut.
But it does have a couple neighbors up there that might interest in buying the law or the forest service, it does back the forest service. And then there's two parcels on Bradley Creek. Those are both in a subdivision within a couple lots of each other, one's 2.57 acres and the one is 1.01 acres. I don't know why they can't even add them unless there was some sort of tax due, so they didn't pay taxes to me, I'm not sure, but it's completely the same stuff. And then the last one is on Bernard Road.
Does that have another piece in there?
There is a little piece in there, that's some other business out there.
The one on Barnard Road is the vacant site?
No, there's one, see this little piece out here?
Okay.
So that's where we're at. And then as we talk about, you know, hopefully at some point we can talk about some issues down to Greenway. I know we collect that someone's property, which is definitely to look at down there to the Florida plan, and some of these are the DRT, but we need to work that.
So what do they use a garage property for?
Apparently now you can see you can put the second page, it's a school bus, it's a van, all of those, but now it's housed, stuff that you can option. And then I think up here with this, pick it quick and this red car, I think that's how it got it.
It's, uh, I have options for conversation. It's, it's what?
The pilgrims that they go out and run out.
You're saying win a rat, it's like installation, not win a rat, close it down?
Yeah, it's like a question.
Yeah, 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 okay.
The one with the big, you know, you got a new magic floor or something. That stuff's been on the surplus property, where the page is.
Is it listed for sale?
The county garage, the Coliseum School. The two pieces on Bradley Creek and Barnard Road, they're all already on the surplus website.
The EDC website, right, at the county.
What do I think of all this?
Fun list.
Once we see another use for it.
Right. Okay, so when we say, so the only way they're listed for sale is somebody has to come find it. We don't have a real estate agent listed.
It's, it's, you find it, you make an offer, and then you've got so many days to count off, but nobody's actively trying to get rid of it.
So it's not on the MLS? Or the, so essentially, you've got to figure out it's for sale. Nobody knows it's for sale.
Probably, I mean.
So that's not really sale, it wouldn't hurt to have it on the MLS.
No, that's what I'm saying.
And if you're going to sell, well, so you might as well not even know it's for sale.
Right, don't just listen, I've never thought about going to the county website to see what it's property that's for sale. Heck, there's a lot of scrap metal on that site.
Now that's south of the city limits too, so it's got some plans.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. You say this is one of the ones that's listed.
And if you'll notice too, Duke Energy just bought this piece just southeast of there.
What's deep in that property?
How big is it?
It's a piece on the corner of their little deal with Old House, before you can installation.
But is that zone commercial? This?
The school boards.
It's either commercial, it's either secondary commercial, or its neighborhood mixed use. And I can't remember, I know when we, the recent rezoning that the town did, did not extend out here, but I know that the park, the properties were in fact down Slone Road are secondary commercial. I'm pretty sure this one's secondary commercial also. I can double check on that, and we'd be glad to get back to you on that. If that be the case, that's, I feel like that that zoning designation opens up a lot of possibilities for this property and makes it, you know, marketable commercially.
That's a lot of good.
It is, it's a good flat too, if I remember right. And you got, you got, you're right there at the borderline, oh, you got to do, see it's Slone Road. That's a good piece of property right there.
Very good. Got a lot of exposure, people want to, came out of there, it's a very good piece of property.
And that's, you know, too, that could, if you develop that property and put something on there, that could liven up that whole end of town right there.
Do you have a gentleman's room?
I don't think that's a zone for that. Those are only lap, those are only lap industrial zones. So. So we're making, going to make this recommendation to the, to the board, correct, what we're essentially doing? Yes, that's great. So, well, yeah, but I, it's somewhere in our recommendation, I think we should, and I don't know how they'll choose who, or, you know, but these properties need to be listed if it's, they're going to self-list them on MLS, but they need to be, somehow, I think we need to recommend that they be listed for sale other than on the website. Right, and Peggy, you know more about this than anybody. If we're going to put it on MLS, do you not, if, I can't just put my property on MLS if I'm not a member of the Frank Ward Realtors, is that right? So to be on MLS is going to involve us having to put this with a Realtor, but at the same time, we can do an open listing to where the, you know, we're not promising anybody commission on that, right?
It's not very, it's not hardly advisable to do that because you don't get the response from the Realtor that they're doing. A lot of times what we do is that we will, say the commission on commercial property is 10%, and instead of taking that, they'll put it in there and give you your full effort, and if anybody in the Realtor sells it, then, you know, the town, the county will pay 14%. But you can take it and get full advertising and everything, and give the town back the right to sell it for sale.
Yeah, if there's no commission attached to it, there's certainly not going to be a desire among the Realtors to try to sell it. Right, if you gave an open listing, you'd still be guaranteeing a commission and just be guaranteed to whatever agent brought you the buyer.
Right, we can't do open listings anymore.
Oh, really?
We cannot do open listings at all. We have to have sign, paperwork before we can put it in, put a sign on it, do anything.
Is there a problem with the county contracting with one real estate company like that, and then that contract is all kinds of, and it's, so it wouldn't be a problem?
There'd be some problems, I'm sure, but.
Oh, yeah, anytime. Why not just take it through an auction, real estate auction? Have I just put the sign on? That's a start. I mean, that's what I figured it would be. We can have, we can have real estate, we can put a real estate sign out there. It may be that, that be it, or, or, we, somebody's got to put a price on it, so I don't know who's going to do that. The other thing you could do is contact all boarding neighbors. I mean, the first place, if I was trying to sell, if I owned that piece of property, before I contacted real estate, it's not called all my neighbors.
But when you put the sign on it, that, and you know, if it's something like this piece, that notifies the neighbors it's for sale, but some of these landlocked properties, the best thing to do is to contact all the neighbors first, which is the first thing I do when I list properties, is contact the neighbors and anybody I think might have a useful property.
And two, we need to, I know that you said they're on the county website, they're on the Economic Development Commission website as well, and I think, you know, we need to first see what efforts are being made by the Economic Development Commission, how they're marketing this property. I know not only do they have a website, but they reach out to, to people outside the county and outside the state and advertise that way, so we need to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts, and we might be, you know, getting into, to doing that, duplicating efforts. I'd like to know personally what's being done by our EDC to market these properties that the county's got for sale. And, you know, that probably, if Mark was here, he would be able to speak to that. That might be something that they're advertising and working with outside of the county already.
But how many people in this room knew that these properties were for sale? Can anybody say they knew it? But when you list for the Realtor, or it's me or anybody in the board, you automatically, when you list that piece of property, it goes wide on Twitter, Zillow, Chirilla, Realtor.com. I mean, you've got exposure everywhere. Customers don't come just to even know it, they're people, investors, and are looking at those websites to get it. And when we list, we're putting it in our local listing, and some of us are a member of the state listing, which goes statewide. And I get a lot of calls from surrounding towns just on listings, up to I handle, I get a lot of calls just from out, around me, from the state board of Realtors. And we do have a state MLS.
What? That's a great idea. That property C2, Matt just showed me on his, yeah. So in saying that, I mean, would the board feel comfortable with going ahead and just, would you get, make a recommendation that we pursue trying to advertise this on the local MLS, and we could knock three of these out of the way right now?
Right, yeah, the EDC doesn't have an interest, that's another reason people.
Certainly.
And does anyone have a, who's the department who's responsible, and that need, if we recommend that we do this?
I'm out of the manager's arms. That'd be that ghost man that sits there. I don't know if he is there, I don't think he's back.
And pricing it, I would say the tax office has access to our MLS and Highlands, and they know what's going on. I would say that the light would probably come in pretty good on that or Teresa, because they've got access to the same things I do to do a market analysis or a BTO or what else.
And as far as that goes, you know, if we make the recommendation to, you know, further advertise these properties on the MLS, and the board, if the commissioner sees fit to do so, I mean, it'll be up to them to ultimately set the price they're going to put on the property, and you know, if they want to, they can pursue, get some Realtors to come in there and look at it, and let them know what price would be fair and marketable to move that piece of property, and then, you know, they can then, the commission can make the best decision with using that information on how they want to price that piece of property. But as far as a recommendation, I think you hit the nail on the head, is that, you know, for these properties that are for sale, everybody needs to know that they're for sale. Like you said, nobody in this room knew that, and everybody in the room should know they're for sale before trying to sell them. So I think we could, what properties, what's that, Matt?
Which ones were that in the book? Currently, the first one, which is old county, or the next one, which is the Coliseum School?
I have a question about that one. That's all about the Board of Education.
Yeah, I'd say it's that the county, that.
It's the Board of Education.
Yeah, I don't know, unless they deed that back to the county, that, that may be a fine line right there.
Because somewhere, I don't know if it's here or in the county, that became an issue.
I think they did it back once along.
See, I thought, I thought the county paid for the school, I was like, what's the note this paid, they paid it to the school? Because wasn't the school board to heed the Calwee School in Calwee?
They did it for county, county did.
So have they given that back to the county? Commissioner David, we're glad to have you, is, do you know, would you, do you know anything more about, about this?
That still belongs to the schools.
Okay, so they would have to, to deed it back to the county before we can, we can do anything with it?
Same way they deal with Coliseum School, or Cartoon J School. There are certain ways they can go about some things. It was a little different situation coming up at that Calwee School, and there's an exchange of building that other school, that something's on the line there. But I think what they got to do is advertise that, take bids on it, that's going to sell bad. I say I think, I'm pretty sure, and my thoughts are right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask the planning board members to consider, if it is the best, is there another use for this that would, for Macon County to come or usable for the county administration, or the Sheriff's Department, or the MLS? I think you can consider that, rather than, and yourself, there's OSOS and select, is there a use, is there a potential, planning board plans for future dropping, so could there be a future use that would not, that's not just, that's left in the place.
It's sort of like Cartoon Gate, it would be on one side of the creek now, we sold the other side, wouldn't that have been pretty handy to have? If we'd have had a little plan there to build a new rep yard.
Well, and that's where Susan had mentioned that we could, right now is the time that we need to get out that comprehensive plan, that the planning board, you know, we worked on for two and a half years, right Susan? And, you know, there was a lot of effort and a lot of community input. We traveled to every community, planning board members did, in this county, and we traveled to groups like Lee Women Voters, the Rotary Clubs, we traveled to the Highlands Community, to Scaly Mountain, to Burnet Town, to the Lesby Chapel, out of Cartoon Gate. And that plan is intended to represent the vision that the people have for, for the county and for years to come, and that's, you know, that's 20 years down the road, a 20-year vision. So like Jack was saying, that plan takes into consideration recreation, healthcare, our elderly population, it could very well shed some light on, on some different ideas. Matt, do we have any copies of that laying around in the planning board?
I think that planning board members should have copies of that, this is a plan.
Right. Maybe we should. Agreed, but my only comment would be on a two acre piece, I think the county doesn't need to go spread everything out, but do more of what they've done on this piece of property, and try and get more things closer instead of, you know, a county office on every corner.
There's, there's other considerations still, I think, so, just for instance, for instance, areas for painting grounds for the, uh, power plants, a little place for longer money, youth markets, things like that. There's other uses that could make it valuable to the community, which would in turn benefit the county as well, but you just need to consider all that use, because once you sell these properties, you know how it is with the back. So don't copy and use this lot of the county's face, I'm sure it's less, I'm not making recommendations that you keep this or sell it, I'm just saying, please, think through it, and you're welcome to think what this could, could be.
Who decides to put it on the market, starts on, so, so.
I think like some of the plots, you know, like the small plots inside subdivisions are like, were not likely to be used for the county, but if you start looking at something like the old street, then maybe you should do this more.
And, yeah, I mean, two, I think, in that, in that discussion, we should look down the road at the future possibilities of, of what this could possibly be, but we need to also look at any potential expenses that the county can take on by keeping, and what it's costing the county to hold on to this too, because, you know, I mean, some things are great to have in there, but is it going to be, is it going to be, is it going to cost the county $20,000 a year to keep it? Well, in this, I don't know what that one building could possibly, the others look like sheds, the one may house something. That one may not be costing a lot to keep it up, but if you, be this, the county's or the Board of Education, I guess that's a question. If it is listed for sale though, I guess that it is, the county is.
It's not listed on the website, I haven't looked. This whole night?
No.
Jack, didn't you make William Moss look at building that before?
Uh, yes, they wanted that for five, like, don't forget, that's what, or, somebody said, or, said.
Yeah.
They were, I can't remember. But, but cops said it'd be in his cash college years, change the policy, and next day they had, it was a little bit of a problem, for that, people weren't happy.
There are issues with that inside the city. Current issues.
But, you know, it depends on what's used in the board, and that's what most classes want to have.
I think it's the school boards, I don't think, I don't think the school board wants to give to the county, because I imagine they want the revenue, if they can sell it.
And two, I mean, like for a property like this, that has this building on it, it's important that we get into some back and forth with the town as far as, you know, what's your, what's your plans for extending your infrastructure out there anyway? What kind of, what else is on that corridor that could possibly provide commercial growth? You know, that's outside the city limits, outside the ETJ, and, you know, like, it would be up to the town board to make a decision as to whether or not they're willing to extend their services out there. And have to weigh the pros and cons of that as well. Because if there's already problems with your, with your own site wastewater system. But you're also, didn't you say have to get rezoned? What is it zoned now?
It's not zoned, it's out of the county.
Yeah.
But again, just, I would urge the board, please, consider the best use for the property that's for sale.
Has any other department expressed interest in it, or, I mean, like the Sheriff's Department, you mentioned the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, has anybody even looked at it, said, you know, that would come in handy for our, if we'd ever had Has anybody even looked at it, said, you know, that would come in handy for our, if we'd never had this discussion?
I think it would be somewhat of a...
Well, the county garage is a, I mean, that's right on the highway, right in town. I mean, that's, Scott. That's, um, seems like there have been lots of good uses for that property for the county or town Franklin or somebody.
And at the same time, that property bring top dollar too?
Well, I, I, I just would think it'd be too small for anything for the county. I would think if they need two acres, there's two acres contiguous with something else. And I, I've not looked at everything, we're looking at ten properties. It has to be something fairly small situation the county was looking at normally. If they were building a building, you'd fill that up on, you know, they're, they're gonna wanna serve enough people, put enough parking in or something. About the one suggestion we made would be, you know, a farmer's parking situation, I don't know.
We started those discussions today, actually. We don't know, we're not handing the site down, we are, we are looking at the viability of having it inside in front.
When they were looking to move the department on edge and move it to the library, they don't have a big site, an EMS of where they're at now for the department on edge and all that, they don't have a big site on the right.
What about that, the dialysis center, where, where was it?
Oh. Is anybody comfortable with making a decision on any of these properties until we take a look at the comprehensive plan and, and maybe take this home and look it over?
Yeah, also it seems like it might be good to do what we was talking about, to, to pass this around to other county agencies to see if there's any response that, yeah, I can see a use for this. Because it seems like other people working in the county, you know, if they aren't aware of this, they might have some things in the back of their mind, but we don't.
Or maybe they haven't needed it by now.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I, would there be anything wrong with making this, wrong with the entitlement in the county departments, so the people could make suggestions?
They put it on the website by the property, too.
Yeah.
I, I think it wouldn't be inappropriate to ask the, the spot here.
Yeah.
If they had an idea.
Because we're just speculating about whether the department's might have the interest in it, the department, you said, look, that would be that information plus the comprehensive plan.
And just to add to that, the comprehensive plan is intended to be representative of local community desire, again, what the community desires and vision they have of this county as we go to the future. So that gives them a voice in this automatically. It's not discussed among only people that are in local government, to the exclusion of the citizens, that's not what we believe in. The citizens spoke very, very frequently and numerous times when we put together that comprehensive plan. And it would serve as a, as their voice when we're discussing these problems. Yeah, that's not, that's not a bad idea at all.
How long would it take us to zoom around to all?
Well, and, and, and I agree with that statement, except on a couple of these.
Couple of these, we could probably get a conversation right away.
Right.
Well, I mean, I don't...
Probably, I think that the last...
It gets me for the whole war, but...
I, I tried it probably, I didn't...
Yeah. The, the, these two that are in, but because, my, my other thing would be, I think if you ask enough people, somebody's gonna find something they wanna do there. Yeah, does that mean that's what should be done there necessarily? So, uh, but, but I think these last...
One, Middle Creek, they're trying to let middle...
Right.
Would that be a good spot for a site out there?
Wouldn't bring it in on a helicopter? It's generated.
It would be, I mean, I think you could probably legally get right away, but it's sort of...
Yeah, how they could do it?
The guy on the big track in there.
That's, it's a way of talk drag.
Yeah, and it's sort of isolated in here, here in the county.
Yeah.
There's like two properties that are joining on the right side and a forest service on the left side. We can do some research on it.
I, I, and, and agree, well, you have a hard time, I mean, if somebody kept selling it, I think if they was buying, I mean, then that guy got landlocked. I mean, the county might could because, you know, condemnation or something, but it'd be a fine, it'd cost you money, so why wouldn't you just sell it?
Yes.
Sell it to the neighbor of the property.
But if you could find a tract of property that's out some hill, that the forest service owns, they can trade with, they can trade with other properties around it. But you have to locate something you want to trade with. And the joint one they've already got, they may have a use for it.
So these properties on Brandwood Creek are...
They're undeveloped?
They are undeveloped.
What's, uh, we went on, on the time log trail, if, you know, let's, let's go through these, let's, let's try to just look at one.
Yeah.
If we're gonna knock them out, or, or we're gonna decide to leave them in. So the one off Middle Creek, what, what, what is the, what's the final feeling of it? Or don't matter, do you have a final feeling yet, or you have the property landlocked? Well, it's landlocked, but it hasn't a tax on it. If you give it for services, you have a tax on it. You can sell it to the neighboring property owner, but why would they buy it? Because they already have access to it.
Yeah.
Because I heard you saying they might put a salt tower there.
Well, I just, you know... But why not keep that in case you want...
You want those big salt towers. Right.
Yeah, I just, it's not costing you, you keep it enough to make anything like a shirt out of it, so why not just leave it?
Or look somewhere where we, we border the, the forest service, where three acres, making that property bigger would be beneficial in the U.S. law.
Yeah, just know we have it.
Right.
Okay, so...
There's two options on that, you either sell it to the neighbor or you trade it with the forest service.
I'm not sure why the neighbor would buy it.
But approach him, listen, if they want to buy it.
Because he's already bought this round of property before.
He bought this one somewhere, he bought this one, he's had to separate it.
And this is forest service, same size?
So, so that's the, of the guy's property there, huh? What's that other red line?
That's what he's going to do out here.
When that adjoining property owner bought that land, was this particular piece of land, was it, um, was it for sale at the time that this property owner here bought it?
I think we had it, we had it for like thirty years, twenty, thirty, it's a long time.
But nineteen eighty-nine was the day it was reported.
Well, that was eighty-nine, yeah.
With that being said, I would entertain a motion that, considering parcel number six four nine nine six one one five two five, we recommend holding on to it for the time being and exploring options of possibly trading it with the United States Forest Service or potentially approaching the neighbors of the neighboring properties to buy it. Is there a second? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Okay, that was done.
And next two of the parcels that I thought would be rather free.
Now...
That is not landlocked?
Well, no. It's lot thirteen of Copeland subdivision, and it's point five seven acres. Its value is fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
And that's not even two thousand four.
Yeah.
The next was one, in the same subdivision, we'll, we'll just discuss these together.
Yeah.
Next page is lot seven, Copeland subdivision. It's one point zero one acres, and it was valued at seventeen thousand dollars.
I'll see what the county needs property of this.
What? Deep restrictions, building size?
Probably if there's association, there would be something, but not through the county.
Right. Well, the biggest thing that I was thinking as it like, uh, the low income housing and stuff like that, aren't they all, you know?
This is a rough little neighborhood.
Oh, is it?
I think it needs to be looked at and for decisions made by, because it's been years since I was down there. Roughly roads going in and out, residential, what you have is a zone. But I think somebody needs to look at it before making a decision.
Do you think they do? I, what, someone, I mean, I understand they want to look at it, I'd like to go look at it, just to see what it looks like, but what, what would that change? How could looking at it change your opinion of what we should do with the property? I mean, if it was a good neighborhood, you'll be able to get more money for it, but it's really not gonna change the, the need that the county might need in the future for it. Because we're not setting values.
The only thing I might suggest is, in terms of talking to the school board about, like, you know, when high school kids go to have a little bit...
Like habitat?
Like habitat.
Yeah, that's granted.
You do that, might have to trade somewhere else.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, that if it's not a size of building restriction and stuff like that...
I could do a little more digging on both of those things.
I think, I think that's a next bound point. But, but before we do all this research on it, just make sure you don't spend a million dollars to get, to get in the road up to it.
Yeah. Yeah, but all of a sudden we give it to the school, and that we gotta make...
So it's, it's a little bit difficult. On these, uh, maps and stuff.
All right.
I'm pretty foggy, I don't remember.
The next piece, I know nothing about the one on Bald Hill, the Barnet Road. I don't know why we have it or anything.
But, right, because all of a sudden, it looks like they have about fifty square feet in there or something.
It's not a lot.
Yeah, so that may be a good...
Does it have access to it?
Why don't we put that one in the parcel, one on Broad Creek, and give it to them?
Right.
John, did you give that? Just go ahead. The night porch right there.
No, but I'm saying that this person owned several parcels.
Yeah, you may be able to sell that.
Seven, yeah, it looks like a couple families, um...
It looks like it's on the backside of Ridge too.
Mm-hmm.
And that may be why they changed that beacon sign.
Right.
Much research, they thought, they thought that.
Yeah, that's what they had. Uh-oh, they send the guy out there for the beacon, and he says, this ain't gonna work, we go over about a hundred yards. We're gonna, we're gonna go back to the Bethel Church Road property. It's the one right after Colesage School.
Wasn't more around it. I think just see what's circulated on the county. See if there's other use for it.
Now, it's right outside ETJ, that's off the Bethel Church Road there.
They just moved off, like the beach.
Okay, so it's just outside of that. What they were gonna do for this one...
Did they put it on Saunders, you said?
Yeah.
What's that?
This, this, you mentioned that they released that...
What's that? The, uh, so this is one of the ones, uh, I guess, if everybody, they, if we talked about getting the comprehensive plan out, circulating around departments, see if anybody in local government here sees any ideas that we could use it to benefit the citizens of this county. Is everybody okay with grouping that in?
Yeah.
With, with that group?
Both any county employee orders that they should have to buy, they're pretty tank tax. They already give them hold for them.
If you want to know how, this property lays very gentle, and it is a really excellent piece of property. And for usability, it's, doesn't have any news or any palms or any strings on it, but it lays well.
Wouldn't build, come to house, wouldn't build on anything.
It's real close to the, there's a couple businesses there, but pretty close to it is that nursery. And then the, uh, usually Man Brothers Chicken Shop right there close, so it's a, it has some commercial around it.
Schrider's right down the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, uh, once all the options and all the department heads and everybody else has, um, talked to and these properties are discussed, if, if people, uh, departments don't see a use for them, I think Kevin, one of them ought to disappear. County shouldn't, if they, they don't have any purpose whatsoever for the county, then they don't need the county at all.
That's certainly, that's certainly a, a topic that, that after we look them over and, and read the tea leaves, we'll, we'll put on the table for discussion. Moving right along, if everybody's comfortable with that, the, the last remaining piece for us to discuss here tonight is this point eight six acre piece out at the Coop on, off of Wendy Gatto.
What it appears is basically dominated that other parts of the first year of association that just got around to finishing.
So is your feeling, they would probably like to have it?
I would think, I think they have it, but...
Maybe they should just have it taken.
That's what I think.
I thought you, one of us just done it.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna just, if I can make this thing order, that's point, would y'all agree that's point zero one two five miles? That's only sixty-six feet wide, and I'm just guessing at this scale right here. So Tommy, you probably couldn't do anything, but...
Well, he could do is sell it to this George Henry wall, or, or give it to the Rose Association.
And the only reason he's gonna buy this, he really hates it, he's got other guys deciding to go out and say it.
Yeah, and that puts that in a huge, right, because obviously...
That's the road.
Yeah, so I think...
Peggy, John, what, what do y'all think about it? Peggy, John, what, what do y'all think about it?
I'll take a survey to get that whole piece out.
Sure, you know what I'm talking about.
Right. That's a.
Not much there.
That's a, that's why we own it.
You wanna make that motion too?
Yeah, I'd, I'd make the motion that we donated to co-op, I mean, they got, like, man, it says they already think it's theirs, so it's just pretty sure.
We have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Look at that, we got one. Okay.
Let's just give them all.
All right, next, I was mistaken, we have, we have a couple more to discuss here, is the property off of the Highlands Road that is in the city limits of Franklin, is the property that's next to your book. The old Macon County Airport, five, two five acres.
You said that, that is not flood plain, that is wetland?
Well, it's, it is flood plain, county town said.
But it is.
Town has, does say.
It's not named flood plain, but it's flood.
There is some wetting in there.
It could get damp.
Personally, I think it's a good tie, potentially to the greenway. And then there's something up, excuse me, toward the front. But a third, a half of it's relatively built.
And this is pitched right before you get to the flag.
Yes, ma'am, you can see on the lower, right hand corner, that's on the next page, that's where the billboards are all, you can see it better on the second map.
And just speaking from.
That is the picture, like.
Without having the plan, the comprehensive plan here, I know the, the value and the sentiment we got for the greenway from everywhere we went, and how important that the citizens of the county felt the greenway was too, so Matt's suggestion on, on incorporating it in or tying it to the greenway, I know that, that that would be supported by, by what we have discussed as a comprehensive plan. But like.
Yeah, I think there's potential uses for it.
Old wall.
Yeah.
Right, and like we, like we, it's wet down there.
Right, you could put some bridges.
Yeah.
Or walls.
So.
Wet, so it's a little bit.
It's like my nephew wants to say, it's scary. So is that, I mean, is everybody comfortable, comfortable with that, with the county holding on to that, possibly exploring tying it to the greenway?
Or do, yeah. Might name it for now, develop it, future.
Yeah.
But I think at least mentioning the greenway in connection with it is a good thing, to let the greenway board know that that is something they can option.
Sure.
I think let the county heads and stuff look at it, just like for doing the other properties, they need to make a final decision, and see what they.
Yeah, because you mentioned it, for the greenway, people, they might think that.
Your dad said on, it's gonna be part of the greenway, nothing to say on it, right?
Right. And certainly, that's exactly right on, that's just, that's one of the options that we could have, and we need to make that clear.
Yeah.
Because you're right, you give people hopes of, and it might not necessarily ever come to fruition, so. In saying that, do we wanna, Peggy has suggested passing it around to departments, just like we are these other ones, and maybe discuss it further after we, we get that, agree with the plan here with us?
We're looking to get money instead of spend money, so this would give. And maybe they have some more options and stuff to do.
Now, her last piece is a piece out on Olive Church Road, I consider it as a northbound forest service office. If you look at the pieces of the layer, the door, say, from each piece, that piece was recently cleared that, that piece was kept for.
Yeah.
For the air, at the airport. That's why this parcel makes me nervous, we talked to somebody at the airport. My recommendation would be to talk to the airport authority, very least, and see what they think.
Well, I, I just, I have a question there, who cuts that, that looks like somebody is maintaining?
Excuse me, forest service maintains, that's their shit, I think they use it.
Somebody hates that thing.
Somebody hates it, but it just doesn't come across, like it's, I would say, wherever that door is placed, that's it.
That, that's, yeah.
But they probably, and it's a good thing, because they.
No, no, exactly. Yes, it looks nice. Yeah, I mean, but, you know. So is, is everybody, I mean, do we look this more, or we kinda hands off on this one?
I think you ask the airport authority, and maybe the.
Is that one of those, but then should it be put under the airport authority? I mean, does that matter, I guess, doesn't matter, is built, I mean, right? I think.
Because most of their funding comes through the county.
Right. The building, the building restrictions that could potentially be on it from the FAA, who in it, whoever's, for the, the, probably.
Yeah, which development mortgage is that thing? There's high restrictions, there's, there are restrictions, there's, there's some restrictions that are gonna happen, that's why, it'd be hard to make.
Well, and they just cut all those pine trees on the left end, so the doors are probably for a reason, you know, keep the blow much easier. Because things like that, I would say, just.
Yeah. I'm, I'm either. Maybe it'd be.
On the way.
There's one.
It's here.
That's one there.
Right. Does anybody feel like maybe we should just exclude this from our discussions for now, this piece, or something different?
Same thing, we should check with the airport authority, see if they have any thoughts on it, probably they would just continue to sit there, so.
Yeah.
Be willing to ask.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're stuck with the, though, is there any use for it, for any agricultural use for, um, community garden kind of things, or anything like that, if we're stuck with it? You know, circulate it, try to use it.
Well, also, I would consider, you were talking about, I think you're trying to use as far as, so. They might be, they might be able to have a billboard.
Oh, right. It looks like this.
Uh, Franklin Department goes to the airport, they don't want.
They don't want his money. That's if they're six.
Calwe covers. Burnetown covers the school, Calwe covers the school.
It just seemed like a native spot for a substitution.
Let's talk to the airport authority.
It's gonna have one or two.
Well, right. Just talk to everybody.
Put it in the same pile.
Put it in the same pile. So, so when we, when you're gonna send this out to the managers, is one of those managers gonna be looking at it for those things?
Really?
Of, of, of the, who is the list you're gonna send these six properties to look at and see if there's any, if they could see any benefits?
Well, you're there. You have Sheriff's Department, you have First Amendment. Department of Social Services, Health Department.
Airport, sorry.
Okay, so we're covered, we've covered everything, where I was going is making sure we, we're, excuse me, that we're covering all these areas.
And we need to be sure we keep PDC in the loop, in case they have some, some claim, you know, or whatever.
Yeah. Step on your toe. So, we. So we have two, by the way. We have voted on two, and as far as the rest are concerned, and Matt's gonna circulate the, uh, properties around to various department heads of the county, we're gonna have a copy of the comprehensive plan here at our next meeting, and we're gonna put that all in a bowl and shake it all up, and see where we come out on our final recommendations back to the commissioners in regards to these properties.
My recommendation on the comprehensive, on the plan was that we also just, each of us take time to review it, and maybe as a group, in a different time, discuss things in that that stick out to us, that, that might pertain to planning board, and that we could potentially work on in the future, things that need implementation, or some kind of response. Because we don't wanna just leave that plan sitting there.
But, it's been. It's, it's time to move forward.
And I have a question about the sign on this, and when we're not going to review the sign on this, uh, does that fall under the, the, oh, yeah, it doesn't seem like it. Do all the, the, during the time? No, do that one either, okay.
Yeah, we have a, we have a letter from, from the county attorney, and basically the gist of that letter, really weird.
Yeah, I just didn't remember, I knew it was pertaining to flood, but I didn't remember that it included the sign.
There's a reason for that, see, the order did, did, did.
So, but as far as now goes, if, um, we'll just carry out with this directive and get it finished, and then see where the commission desires us to go from there. So, with that being said, is there anything else that anyone would like to discuss before we adjourn? Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Give a second.
And what happens?
All in favor.
Regularly scheduled meeting, Matt will be keeping that out.
Do we need, uh, we need guys to pass them out to the department heads?